Uh, John was out in the attendees, but I see he got moved over. Thank you. I just wanted to be sure he got moved over. We kind of need the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Andy, I feel like I'm in the wrong meeting with you on this meeting.
Well, I hope not. I hope I'm in the right meeting.
Oh, good, good. Just like, Andy.
Nice to see you, Susan.
Nice to see you.
Well, I've got 6:30, so I will go ahead and get started. Ms. Burgess, do we have everybody we need here?
Yes, we do.
Thank you so much. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 26, 2021. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
I will show Vice Mayor Lamont Abson and Mayor Moore.
Here, thank you very much. I would like to take this opportunity to express our patience with our meeting delay. We had the fortunate opportunity to do a ribbon cutting for our new SAFE program in collaboration with the City Road Park. So that was another opportunity and looking forward to that program up and running. So thank you very much for your patience on that. With that, I will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America.
From America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. I was thinking about it today and thinking about the opportunity we had to initiate the SAFE program for those people in crisis. And I thought it might be an appropriate moment to take a moment of silence and to think of all the families and people and friends that we have lost to this tremendous horrific pandemic. We were hoping by now that it would be over. So if you would indulge me for a moment, just a moment of silence, and recognize those that have suffered under that. Thank you very much. And now I would be looking for, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Robid, would you kindly introduce our staff that are here tonight?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, obviously, myself, city manager, Damian Obed, we have our department head, starting with the police chief, Michael Parish, our community development director, Noah Hausch, our, sorry, public work and city engineer, Craig Scott, and our director of administrative services, Angela Quarter, and of course, we also have Lauren Burgess, our city clerk, and John Barker, our city attorney here tonight with us.
Thank you, Ms. Robid. With that, I would look at an approval of our minutes.
Move to approve the minutes? Do you want them separately or all together?
I would defer to Mr. Barker on that. I think we can do them all together, or do they? Okay.
Second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, if you could kindly give us a roll call on that.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, the City Council declines to respond and should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any of the statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatacy.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading a mobile app from the iOS or Android App Store, or by texting your zip code 949312888777. And like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@kattatacy.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. And finally, the Kattati Historical Society, CHS, will host a community gathering and reopening of the historic museum on Sunday, November 7, 2021. Feel free to explore what's new between the hours of 12 noon and 3 p.m. The museum is located inside City Hall near the west side entrance. Parking is available on East School Street. COVID-19 precautions will be in place. And if you've never had an opportunity to view the museum, I would encourage it. It's a wonderful little gem. And now we'll be looking for approval of the final agenda. Any changes to that, Mr. Obed?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on a consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. With that, we'll move on to, oh, I'm sorry, I will open it up for citizens' business.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Merlin Coleman, go ahead.
Merlin, I believe you're muted. It looks like you're still muted.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I am up on Cypress Avenue, 8844, working on starting a farm up here. And I think that you all might be working on prioritizing the rezoning and ag that you have on your agenda. And I'm just very hopeful that you're able to do that. I'm in support of that. I have a beautiful farm started here that we feel has a lot of support, but it seems that it's not, somehow the zoning isn't lining up with the city's general plans, so I'd like to encourage that happening and thank you all so much for putting all the effort in that you do down there. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Moore, that will end the public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Now, we'll move on to consent calendar, item 8A and B. And we are going to separate these two items and because we have a recusal on item 8B by Councilmember Harvey. So, I would look for a motion to consider item 8A acceptance of the 2021 pavement preservation project.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I would move that we approve item A.
This is Councilmember Ford. I'll second that.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. And now, I don't know if on a recusal, our councilmember that has to recuse herself has to step out of the Zoom or she can just...
Well, because it's on a consent calendar, she's not required to leave the room, but she does need to make a quick statement about the nature of her financial interest.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
Okay, thank you. I'm recusing myself from item 8B on the consent calendar because it involves the proposed Cypress Water Tank, which would be constructed on property that is adjacent to my personal residence. Because this is a consent calendar item, I'm not required to leave the room, but I would request that item 8 be considered separately so I can recuse myself. And I would ask that the city clerk please have this statement included in the minutes.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. With that in mind, I would look for a motion to consider 8B.
I move that we I move that we approve item 8B.
And I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Burgess. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. We'll show that as one recusal, one absent, and three, yes, thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to direction on future agenda items. Do we have any other items we want to present to our existing staff for consideration at this moment?
Mayor Moore, I have just one item.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
And that would be the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency approved a memorandum of understanding item. And it needs to come to each of the jurisdictions for 1383 for them to be able to help with that for all the cities, but each city will have to go through and approve that MOU with the Waste Management Agency because it isn't in our current current JPA agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey, do we have a certain time restriction on that?
As soon as possible, but, you know, as soon as we can get it on the agenda, it would be good because, as we all know, 1383 is coming down the railroad tracks pretty quickly, so.
And that's due to be implemented January of 2022.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
This was raised by Councilmember Sparks last meeting, but because there's a member of the public asking about it here, I want to reiterate my support for for putting updating our zoning to match the emphases in our general plan on the agenda as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. And of course, we will be discussing that in our priorities as well. Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll move on to our regular agenda, item 10A. Presentation on the draft center was a plain groundwater sustainability plan. And this is Mr. Scott who will be presenting this.
I will make a brief presentation and let the GSA staff take over from there. Yes, thank you. So, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Tonight, we are to receive a presentation on the draft groundwater sustainability plan. With us, our staff from the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, Andy Rogers, who's the administrator, and Marcus Trotta. He's the resident groundwater expert with Sonoma Water. And his background, well, we have Councilmember Susan Harvey is on the Board of Directors for the GSA. And I'm sure she would be delighted to have input, to welcome input from the council on the draft plan. I'm on the advisory committee and for the GSA, and we have both been reviewing and we have been presented with draft chapters from the plan for and Andy Rogers can correct me during the presentation for at least the last two years. And then those sections have also been brought before the board for their input. So, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and have Andy Rogers and Marcus Trotta take, make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Andy Rogers. As Mr. Scott said, I am the administrator for the San Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency. It's nice to see our vice chair, Harvey, tonight, and the rest of you, being my hometown council. So, it's a pleasure to be here. So, we are going to go through just a very brief overview of the GSA and then, which is the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, just to remind you what this agency is. And then our central project that Mr. Scott mentioned, preparing a groundwater sustainability plan, and Marcus Trotta, who is leading that effort, is going to talk about that. So, next slide, please. So, in the last drought, there was a landmark law passed in 2014, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And basically, that required basins identified by the state to form a groundwater sustainability agency, which is what in Sonoma County, there are three such basins, Petaluma Valley, Sonoma Valley, and the Santa Rosa Plain. And the Santa Rosa Plain is where the city of Kattati lies. And so, this is what was a law that started this whole process. Next slide, please. So, there's some confusing lines here, but we are looking at the Santa Rosa Plain groundwater basin. And so, for the light gray surrounded by the dotted blue, light blue, is the groundwater basin, and it's defined by the surface geology, not by city boundaries and those kinds of things. And it's essentially the valley floor. And so, what we're looking at is the city of Kattati is at the southern end. North of Windsor is the north end, and then it goes from west, from Sebastopol to into Santa Rosa. Next slide. So, this is hard to read, but essentially, the way the Groundwater Sustainability Agency is constructed, we have 10 member agencies, the city of Kattati being one of them. And then we have staff, which is on, I'm in the box down to the left. And then we have the advisory committee, which is 18 members, of which Mr. Scott participates. Next slide. So, why are we doing this? Is we're asked to sustainably manage our groundwater in the basin that I outlined in that map for now and in the future. And we need to meet the requirements of SIGMA, which is the State Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. The requirement of that, so that's why we exist. And what we're here to do is we're preparing a GSP, so a whole bunch of new acronyms for everybody, Groundwater Sustainability Plan. So, we're making sure our plan that we're developing, we're going to talk about tonight, reflects the goals and priorities of our basin community and to be as cost-effective, of course, and efficient as possible. Next slide. So, we talked about the formation, which was in 2017. The agency was started, formed and started. And so, we are in step two, which is, it's been a few years, as Mr. Scott mentioned, of developing a groundwater sustainability plan. Think more about that. Next slide. So, a groundwater sustainability plan is, it's required by the state, as I mentioned. And it's something that we've developed locally, and it's based around structure provided by the state, but it's both developed locally and implemented locally. And it basically, it will give a picture of what the basin conditions are. Is it healthy? What are the issues associated with it? And then we need to pay attention to that. We're not going to submit this plan and then be done. We have to adaptively manage going forward, and every five years, we need to update our plan. So, these plans are not optional. The plan itself is not subject to CECL. We get this question a lot, why not? The projects that may come from the groundwater sustainability plan may be subject to CECL, depending on what they are. And really, the reason we're doing that is not just a direct response to our current drought. This is a long-term plan. And includes funding plan, I'm going to talk about also. Next slide. And basically, these are just to answer three core questions, and these are in order. What are the basin conditions today and in the future? Are these conditions that we've defined sustainable? And how can the basin achieve sustainability by 2042? So, it's a 20-year plan. And I think this might be my last slide before I turn it over to Marcus. Can you go to the next slide? All right, so, one more piece of information. You know, the basin, you know, most of the water that's used in our basin with all the cities and the rural residents and the unincorporated areas of the basin, really, 45% of that water is imported. But we have 35% of all the water we use is from groundwater, so this is an incredibly important component of being sustainable going in the future. Next slide. And there are a lot of wells, and that's kind of the headline to this slide. But what it shows in the different colors is the density of wells, so the darker, warmer colors are where there are more wells. And, you know, we don't have every well mapped, but these are the ones that are known throughout the basin. And the large, you can see the basin shape, the larger shape around that is the watershed. So, the watershed will shed into the valley floor where the basin is located. Next slide. And I just wanted to point out where the groundwater sustainability plan is found. It's on our website. And I believe there's also hard copies available at libraries and perhaps at City Hall. But we also provide information. Drought is obviously in everybody's mind. I know the storm. Maybe it's all over now, and I don't think so. Drought is here to stay, so we're going to be constantly providing resources and information around how a rural well, or if you're a small water system or an interested person to manage water better, we're going to be constantly providing information. And so, I think that I'm pretty sure that's my last slide. I'm going to turn this over to Marcus Trotta, who's been leading development of the groundwater sustainability plan. Tell you more about that.
Okay, thank you, Andy, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Pleasure to be here this evening. Go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. As Andy mentioned, my name is Marcus Trotta. I'm a principal hydrogeologist with Sonoma Water. And we're serving as a staff to the GSA, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, through a contract technical services agreement. And so, our group is, along with consultants, are leading kind of the technical aspects of the groundwater sustainability plan development. And what we're showing here is essentially the overall table of contents. These are all the different sections of the plan. It's quite a very long and technically complex document that's required to have a lot of information and documentation of how, you know, we're setting thresholds and criteria and selecting projects and management actions. And so, you can see all of the components here and what's included in them. I won't read through all of that, but they just want to kind of point out some of the key sections that are shown in bold there, with the first being the executive summary. So, this would be a good place to start for someone who's interested in the information within the plan. There's a high-level summary of what's in each section of the plan itself, along with some key figures. Section four is the sustainable management criteria, and those are really the thresholds and objectives that are set for for the basin, and those criteria determine how we locally define sustainability for this particular basin. So, with SIGMA, the state does provide locals, these local groundwater sustainability agencies, to define how sustainable conditions are within their own basins, within certain requirements and standards that the state has developed. So, that's an important section. And then, projects and management actions, that describes the different projects and actions that are proposed to either maintain or achieve sustainable conditions within the basin by 2042. So, within a 20-year timeframe, and then SIGMA requires that we remain sustainable for another 30 years. So, there's a total 50-year planning horizon associated with the GSP. And then, implementation plan is where you'll find a description of all the different activities that the GSP that the GSA will be required to implement, with really a focus on the first five years of implementation. SIGMA requires annual data reporting. SIGMA requires annual data reporting, quite a bit of monitoring, assessment of data gaps. And so that's a big component of our plan, as well as collecting more information and filling needed data gaps. This is also where you'll find a schedule, as well as a five-year budget that's estimated for the implementing of the plan. Next slide, please. So the basin itself, as Andy pointed out, has a wide array of different stakeholders, as well as different water sources. And here, we're showing kind of geographically where those different types of water sources that Andy showed on the pie chart are utilized, with the imported Russian River water being utilized primarily by the larger, you know, urban areas, the cities within the basin that are contractors to Sonoma Water for deliveries of water from the Russian River system, the exception being the city of Sebastopol, which is one hundred percent reliant on its local groundwater supplies. Other water sources that are shown, actually are not shown on this map, that we have a corrected version of this map that didn't make it into your presentation, but in purple are areas that receive recycled water. And unfortunately, this map is just showing those parcels that are receiving recycled water from the airport treatment plant. There are a number of other recycled water parcels, including some, I believe, in Cattati that receive water from the Santa Rosa, city of Santa Rosa sub-regional system. So that's a very important source of water to our basin and helps offset the use of local groundwater. And then in the kind of the brownish colors and kind of reddish-brownish colors are areas where rural residents, farmers, some commercial businesses rely pretty much solely on groundwater within the basin. Next slide, please. So I mentioned those sustainable management criteria as being kind of key to how we define sustainability in the basin. And what those criteria look like are, they are essentially thresholds and objectives that SIGMA requires us to set for six indicators of basin conditions or health. And in this basin, there are five indicators that are applicable to the basin. One of those, seawater intrusion, is not applicable to the Santa Rosa Plain because we're not connected to a source of seawater. But the others include the chronic lowering of groundwater levels, the potential for land surface subsidence, lowering of the land, irreversible lowering of the land due to groundwater pumping, degradation of water quality that's caused by groundwater conditions within the basin, the depletion of surface water from streams is another indicator that that's included. And then the decline of the amount of groundwater and storage within the basin is the fifth indicator that requires assessment. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to give a real high-level snapshot of kind of the overall conditions. The GSP includes a section, section three, called the basin setting, that goes into what we know about the basin in quite a bit of detail. And so, starting out with kind of the, you know, the good news category, is that for groundwater quality, for the purposes of implementing the GSP, is generally acceptable within the basin. There are certainly some areas that do have some challenges in terms of naturally occurring constituents or releases from land surface that can cause problems. But for managing the basin, for SIGMA purposes, the overall groundwater quality is generally acceptable. And the GSA's role in water quality is really to make sure that they don't do any harm to the basin with the projects and actions that they're going to be doing. There are many other agencies that already are regulating water quality, such as the regional water quality control boards and the county in some areas. The other, you know, kind of good news side is we don't have any evidence of irreversible or inelastic land surface subsidence that's occurring due to groundwater pumping within the basin. And that's because, for the most part, when we look basin-wide, groundwater levels are generally pretty stable in both the deeper and shallow aquifer systems. There have been historical areas of groundwater level declines in the basin. Those particularly, actually, in the southern portions of the basin, there were a park when groundwater use was much higher back in the eighties and nineties. Since that time, Runa Park, for example, has utilized a lot more surface water from the Russian River and decreased their groundwater use, and that's caused groundwater levels to recover. And so the trends we see most commonly in the basin these days are stable trends or recovering trends due to the reductions in pumping. Next slide, please. So some of the could be better news is, as I mentioned, the data gaps are something that we're required to assess. And one area where we have a lot of data gaps and lots of uncertainty is related to surface water depletion due to groundwater pumping and potential impacts on riparian vegetation or aquatic species. And so that's an area where we don't see or know of any problems right now, but really the early stages of implementing this plan is going to include the collection of data for us to better this particular sustainability indicator. Next slide. And then maybe the not-so-good news is that, you know, another tool we have is a groundwater model, and so we've developed that to provide a water budget that I'll show, I think, on the next slide, that has indicated that over time, and particularly during kind of more recent time periods, including the last drought we went through, there's been an increasing decline in the amount of groundwater in storage within the groundwater basin. So that's something to keep an eye on and to further assess. Next slide, please. So this is the other kind of important tool we have that's included in the GSP. This is called a water budget, essentially an accounting of how much water is going into and out of the basin on an annual basis. SIGMA requires that we have three different time periods, a historical time period for this basin, which goes back to nineteen seventy-six, a more current time period, which is from twenty twelve to twenty eighteen. And then we're also required to project out fifty years. And so we looked at different water demand projections out into the future and simulated additional growth within the basins, as well as a climate change future, and calculated these kind of annual averages for future water budget. You can see the red arrows show the outflows from the basin and the blue arrows show the inflows from the basin, with some of the larger components there being kind of the direct percolation of precipitation over the basin, surface water and groundwater exchange, the seepage to groundwater and groundwater to discharge to streams, another important component of the water budget. And then inflows from adjoining areas is also another important component. When we, when we, when we look at the difference between the inflows and outflows for that projected water year, we are calculating a change in storage of about fourteen hundred acre-feet per year. And the other thing to note there is the, another, one of the biggest, the biggest source of outflows in the basin is pumping from a combination of agricultural, municipal and domestic supplies. Next slide. So because we do have the potential for exceedances of some of those thresholds that we've set when we project out those fifty years, we have included some projects and management actions within the, in the plan to either begin implementing or to study into the future. And so there's essentially two ways to do that, and it's either reducing demands or increasing supplies. And the plan proposes kind of a combination of those two things, a portfolio of different projects. So those include water use efficiency and alternate water source projects for groundwater users, rural residents, commercial and industrial users, and agriculture, leveraging a lot of the existing programs that have been available to the cities through conservation, urban conservation programs, as well as existing best management practices that have helped reduce agricultural use in some areas. So rolling those out to more users in the basin. Next slide. And then on the supply side, a few of the projects that we're looking at are aquifer storage and recovery, otherwise known as groundwater banking. So this would be taking advantage of wintertime water from our Russian River Aqueduct. When we have high flows in the river, we can take that water and use our existing infrastructure, our existing aqueduct, and deliver that to wells for injection into the basin, storage for use during times of need. And that's a process that can essentially offset the pumping of native groundwater. And this would be recharge using our treated drinking water. So essentially the same water that we, that comes out of our taps would be the water that would be used for recharge in that type of project. Another type of project that there's a lot of interest in is stormwater capture and recharge. So this would be, again, taking advantage of high flows when we have days like we had on Sunday and this week, when we can take some of that water, spread it out on the landscape and allow it to infiltrate. This type of project is something that can really help out with the shallow aquifer system and help out with that stream flow, stream and aquifer connection. Next slide. So with that, I think I'm heading back to Andy to talk about the fun stuff. I think you're still muted, Andy.
Oh, how many years is it going to take me before I remember that? Thanks. So the groundwater sustainability plan includes a budget for looking ahead for the actions that Marcus just laid out, and as well as staying in compliance with the law. We have to continue to meet and update, and there's a lot of data gaps that need to be filled. So there's a high-level budget put in for, that represents the first five years, that we're looking at between one point one and one point two million in order to stay in compliance and do things that are identified as needing to be done. You can see the filling data gaps is the biggest cost, keeping things going, and monitoring and reporting, and then the update. So these things are at a high level, but they are included in the plan, and you're welcome to take a look at that. Next slide. So we've been very successful, and I'm saying we, like I had something to do with it, I didn't use before my time, but Sonoma Water and the member agencies submitted a grant application to prepare the groundwater sustainability plan that Marcus just talked about and was successful. So there's been a couple million dollars that's been gotten so far to not only help prepare the plan, pay for preparing the plan, but also begin some of the implementation work. So we're, we're going to be making sure that we ride that success and then aim to get more federal dollars in, so that one point one million dollars and the projects associated with them, or hoping grants are going to be a big part of that picture going forward. But then also, there's local, state, other federal partners, our member agencies. And in two thousand nineteen, we adopted a fee structure, so equitable payment for the users of groundwater in the basin. So we're all, we all benefit from, and I'm, I have a well in the basin myself. So we all benefit from a healthy groundwater, sustainable groundwater basin. And so we calculated in two thousand nineteen how to do that equitably, and we're going to be updating that now that the plan's been developed next year in two thousand twenty-two. Next slide. So for those who were wondering how this is going to relate to yourself, here are some bullets that kind of provides our, what we believe, how it does affect you, benefit you, how you might be involved, why you might be interested to read this plan, is, you know, because of the future generations and the sustainability of our basin, so folks have good water, and maintaining the groundwater levels, the availability of that. And one of the really cool things is, if you, if you're a rural resident like myself, I'm not hooked up to a water supplier like the city of Cattati or Santa Rosa, you know, conservation programs haven't been available. But the GSA can be a mechanism to provide those kinds of water conservation rebates and tools that folks that are, that are customers of water suppliers have been able to take advantage of. And so we're looking forward to bringing those to all groundwater users in the basin. Then if you are a farmer or a business, it is possible that the GSA could someday require a meter on those wells. That is not being contemplated at this time, but it is in the authority of the GSA if we thought it was a necessary action. Everybody else, pretty much, rural resident and a small groundwater user, if you use less than seventeen hundred and eighty-five gallons a day, which is a lot of water, we have no ability, even if we wanted to, require a meter on those wells. So there's some misinformation out there that that's the plan and is not the plan. Even if we wanted to, we could. But we are thinking that when the plan is approved by the state, we're going to have a fee that will help cover the costs of keeping the basin sustainable. Might be my next, last slide. Next slide? Maybe it's on the process. Yes. So as Mr. Scott mentioned, this plan's been developed in many, many, many public meetings over two years plus. And right now, the complete draft is available for public review. We highly encourage, the end of the public review period is the thirty-first of this month, so I'm really glad we had the opportunity to speak with you still within the comment period. But even after the comment period, we encourage involvement. We're not going away. We're continuing to meet with our advisory committee, our board, and we want to keep updating our plans. So we've had community meetings, and we will continue to have community meetings. And even after we submit our groundwater sustainability in January, there's going, well, there's public hearings in December. First of all, the Santa Rosa Plain one is the ninth, so you're welcome to plug into that hearing. And then after it's submitted in early twenty twenty-two, the Department of Water Resources, which what DWR is, has a seventy-five-day public review period on top of that. So there's still a lot of time to provide comments and read these things. Next slide. And here's how you find it. So go to our website. The October fourteenth date's obviously passed, as I mentioned. There's actually going to be a November, is it eighth? No, November, I'm sorry, November tenth, San Rosa Plain Board meeting. You can find that information on our website also. And then the hearing for the groundwater sustainability plan is December ninth. And I think that concludes the information we have, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Thank you, Mr. Trada. Thank you, Mr. Scott. I'm, do you have a few questions that are coming up here? Councilmember Ford?
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation and very excited to see the plan. One question about the modeling, well, first of all, I'm wondering, Marcus, if you can explain the difference between the two indicators, the level and the amount of groundwater stored? Aren't those measuring pretty much the same thing? Aren't those measuring pretty much the same thing?
They are very much measuring pretty much the same thing. And in fact, one of the things that Sigma does allow you to do is use groundwater levels as a proxy for some of those other sustainability indicators. And groundwater storage is one of those other indicators where we are in the plan recommending to use groundwater levels as a proxy for groundwater storage. There are other approaches, the way that other GSAs are doing it is to report the amount of groundwater extraction from their basin to reflect changes in storage. However, we don't have, you know, for many of the groundwater extractions in the basin, we're relying on estimates versus reported usage.
Right. Okay. Thanks. And then a follow-up on that on the modeling for the groundwater storage. I'm encouraged that your models show that the net decrease is fairly low. Like if we talk about, you know, banking, that'd be a pretty small banking project to put that much water back in the ground. So that's encouraging. But at 1,400 acre-feet a year, out of, it's around 50,000 in and out each year. I'm wondering how confident you are that the balance is really negative? I mean, that seems like a lot of those estimates have got to be pretty, you know, I mean, I don't know how you measure ground, you know, stream infiltration into groundwater to that level of precision. So I'm just curious how confident we are that it's actually negative right now.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it certainly is. There is, you know, a fair amount of uncertainty with any model, and in particular, when you have that many different inputs and outputs that are, in some cases, as you mentioned, difficult to measure, such as recharge, that introduces uncertainty. And so that's, I think, one of the main reasons why the way that Sigma was written and the way that GSPs are required to implement Sigma is that the models, the water budget does not actually determine whether or not you're sustainable. So even though we're showing that, you know, potential 1,400 acre-foot per year storage loss, it's really the future monitoring of all of those indicators, groundwater levels, depletion of surface water, things like that, assessing those with relation to where we've set the different metrics for our thresholds and objectives is how the state is gonna judge whether the basin's sustainable or not.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I have two. They're probably stupid questions, but I'm gonna ask them anyway, just because I'm new to this. The first one is, in the regional map, there's an island just west of Cattati that's excluded from the basin. Is that just because the elevation is too high and it's not part of the basin? Or why is that excluded?
Yeah, that's a good question and good eyes. Yeah, so that island, there's also one in Petaluma Valley. It's essentially an area where bedrock is exposed at the surface. And as Andy mentioned, the state defines basins based on the geology. And so they exclude areas of hard rock, bedrock, or volcanic rocks. So that's why that island is there.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question was about the the minimum threshold and measurable objectives for well, chronic lowering of groundwater levels. The levels that we're looking for are different if the wells are considered stable or wells with historical declines and then recovery. So I'm just wondering about Cattati, like what, which one of those categories would the wells around here fall into?
Yeah, good, good question. Because Cattati is pretty close to, you know, area where there was historical groundwater level declines back in the nineties. Generally falls under that category of areas where there has been declines followed by stability. And the way that the minimum thresholds are set, which are the levels that we don't want to go below that could be an indicator that there's what are known as undesirable results. We base those on not going below historical lows to make sure that we stay within those previously, above those previous historical lows.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I don't think I will ask poor Marcus any questions. I kind of wanted to thank Andy for hurting us along the pathway to getting us here to the plan. We've had some very interesting meetings along the way. He pointed out that we had a community meeting, the last community meeting. There were well, many over 50 people there. I wrote lots of names. We've gotten lots of input, written input, and, which is very, very helpful, and the questions and the thoughtfulness of the folks in the community meeting. I think they're really starting to understand what this is all about. Because in the very beginning of this process, it was not very pretty at these community meetings. So it's really good that people are finally understanding. And secondly, I would like to thank Marcus and his counterpart, Jay Jasper's. They are the technical gurus in all of this, and I probably asked for Marcus and Jay at least 1,000 questions. And both of them really have a way of taking what is a really very technical thing. If you actually look at these documents, a lot of them, I've had a couple of phone calls from people. They go, but it's so technical. And yes, it is. But Marcus and Jay have done just really a very good job of kind of walking folks through something that is really technical. And it's meant to be technical because the audience for this plan is the water board. So, you know, that is why it is the way it is, because it needs to be. Because it's the water board that actually has to look at this and approve these. But I just would like to pass on all of those thanks. And it's so wonderful that we're getting towards the finish line, or at least the starting line of being able to do the plan. So thank you, Marcus and Andy, again.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. I don't see any further questions right now for the existing attendees and/or Mr. Scott, so I will open this up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, for our attendees tonight. Please use your race sand icon, or if you're dialing in, please use star nine. Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much for a good presentation. And I guess Cattati appears to be somewhat isolated from it. But one of the aspects of groundwater injection, if there's chlorine in the water, doesn't that create a hypochlorous acid, a weak acid? And is there any studies of what that might do? So that's question number one. And if, I mean, maybe not related directly, but if we would like to do more infiltration or encourage people to think about infiltration, is gray water a good way of doing it? One, it could save the town money in terms of returned water that needs to be processed, but also get people thinking about what happens with that gray water. And a third question, maybe again for a Cattati perspective. I noticed in the current storm that my property absorbed at least four inches of that rain. So we had eight inches, and I'm pretty at the back end. We didn't output any water. So I'm just wondering, we're coming up to think about Helen Putnam Park redesign. And could that be a place where for large storms, there might be some infiltration? So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Ginny Blaker, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask two very stupid questions. That was a great presentation. Thank you. But I wondered if you could clarify a couple of things. There was a mention on one slide of alternative sources of water, I think. And I was thinking, well, there's surface water in the creeks, there's groundwater underground. What other alternative is there? And were you thinking of something like rainwater catchment? Or I didn't follow what alternative sources would mean. And the other thing is, there was a reference to rural users using up to 1,785 gallons a day, which seems huge. I thought we were supposed to be aiming for 55 gallons a day per person. So I wondered if you could explain that figure. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Blaker.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you so much. I'm not sure if Mr. Trada would like to handle that, those questions?
Sure, I can take a shot. So starting with Mr. Hancock's first question on aquifer storage and recovery and water quality. And so, yeah, that is something, any residual chlorine within the source water that's being injected into the wells, there's a potential for that to react with organic carbon that's in the aquifer and form disinfection byproducts, which are also naturally, which are also occur within the drinking water. The State Regional Water Quality Control Board is responsible for permitting aquifer storage and recovery projects. And that's one of the things that's included in monitoring programs associated with those types of projects. And we actually did a pilot study in the city of Sonoma, utilizing treated water from the aqueduct. And we did see some low levels of those constituents that are in the treated drinking water. However, they all remain below the regulatory thresholds. But it is something that would be closely monitored associated with those projects. And it is something that the other regulatory agencies are, you know, have their eyes on and are responsible for requiring. On the infiltration, and so gray water, it would be considered like one of those alternate water sources to get at Ms. Blaker's first question there. Gray water is something that could be included to offset the use of potable water or, you know, in groundwater in those cases of rural residential. And then I'll just also finish up on the alternate water sources question. So other types of alternate water sources would include rainwater harvesting, recycled water, things like that. And then the potential for redesign of parks and such are types of projects that would fall under that, potentially that stormwater capture and recharge aspect. You know, any kind of low-impact development or project that slows, spreads, and sinks water into the ground to reduce, you know, potentially reduce flooding and increase infiltration are the types of projects that the plan would be, you know, supporting and potentially helping promote. And then lastly, Ms. Baker's question on the rural residential, the 1,785 gallons per day. That's not an estimate of what rural residential users are using in this basin. That number comes from the state, and it's how they define a de minimis groundwater user in the Sigma regulations is any, anyone that's using less than that amount of water, essentially two acre-feet per year for just domestic purposes, non-commercial purposes, are considered de minimis users and are exempt from certain requirements of Sigma, primarily the, any, they can't have meters imposed upon them. So that's where that number comes from.
Thank you so much, Mr. Trada. With that, I will bring it back to the council as we're looking for feedback and direction. I think this would be something in the subject matter expert of Councilmember Harvey.
Well, it didn't sound like anyone had any real concerns with anything. And it sounds like even the public comments, those questions were answered. So really looking to see if there's anything out there that people were concerned about because this is important and we've been working on it for a little bit. And we just wanted to be sure that the council and the public in our community had the opportunity to weigh in if they had any striking concerns. So it's just another set of public outreach.
Thank you so much. So with that, I don't know that we need a motion on this or anything, but I certainly appreciate all the work put into this with Councilmember Harvey, with Mr. Rogers and Mr. Trada, and again, Mr. Scott on the technical portion of that. Thank you all so much and appreciate it. So with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the 10B license agreements to operate the Veranda Faletti Ranch.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the councils. So I'll just give a, I'll just give a quick overview. I won't go into some of the background that's in the staff reports. I think we all are familiar with that. But most recently, on August 24th, there was, we had a conversation about the farm, the farm work plan that was presented by Sandy Loam and Farmster. And at that meeting, the next step in the license renewal was to come back and actually renew the license agreements. And so that's what this is about tonight. So in the packet, there's two five-year licenses, and one is to Farmster, and the other is to Amama Tati or Sandy Loam. And the basic outline of the license agreements is that they are license agreements as opposed to like a leased kind of structures that are, they are a license. And the license covers access over the entire property. But then the licensed premises is defined in the attached map. And the purpose of this is to ensure that there's legal mutual access for both parties on the property. The license fee is a dollar consistent, a dollar per year, consistent with other city licenses such as this. Both license agreements are, by the way, they're essentially mirror images of each other. So they're very consistent, except for there's an exhibit, exhibit C, that has some specific provisions for each licensee, but otherwise they're essentially identical. It does require appointment of a property manager for each one of the licensees. And the licensees do become responsible for basically normal maintenance and minor repairs. The city would retain responsibility for any larger repairs. $5,000 is the threshold that's used in the agreements. And maintenance items, over 2,000. There is an allowance for occasional, actually four times per year exceedances of the maintenance. And that would be maybe like spring, you know, landscape things that might just be more expensive. So there's that occasional thing, but it requires city authorization. The city would fund programs supported in the farm work plans. And these are all things that would provide community benefits and are intended to act as supplemental programs for other things already going on in the community, other preschool programs, other public school programs, things like that. There's a table in the staff report that has some examples of the types of programs that we'd be looking at. And the normal insurance and indemnity provisions, and then there's the ability, it's a 30-day termination ability or immediate for life and safety issues. And I think the most, well, the most immediate thing that's gonna happen if the council approves the license agreements tonight is some preschool farm and garden field trips. So there's like a chicken keeper's club for pre-K kids with the other preschools that they, that Amama Tati has been working with to have them visit the property, basically like a field trip, and do chicken activities on the property. And so that would be probably the first thing that we would see in November. And then the rest of the programs would start building from there. And the intent is that each, each February, it was intended to coincide with strategic, strategic planning. But actually before that, they would provide an updated work plan for the coming year, coming fiscal year. And then at a staff level, we'd work through that. And then during strategic planning and budget processes, we would have those conversations about what that upcoming work plan would look like. So that's, that is a general outline. The, the licensed activities were already budgeted. We talked, we did talk about it in general terms during strategic planning and budget this year. So that's already budgeted for, so there's no additional appropriations required. I will also, before I close the presentation, just let everyone know that Ishwarya with Sandy Loom or also Amama Tati is the, is how they're licensed, is here tonight, as well as Jeff Kelly and Dustin Di Matteo for Farmster. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Abid. Councilmember Ford.
Just one quick question about, I'm not sure I understand what it means to appoint two different parties as the property manager for the property, especially when it comes to something like scheduling events. And so I'm wondering if the city has thought through what that looks like. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming these two parties work well together and there's not an issue. But it's, it seems like kind of a funny structure to write a license in which each one is separately identified as the property manager.
Yes, the, I understand. It is, so what we are working, what we were trying to accomplish is that both licensed parties would have access to the entire property, but they'd have a primary licensed premises that they're in charge of. And then separate from the city license agreements, there's also, we use different names for it, but they're, they're working on a third-party cooperative access agreement where they work out the terms of their mutual access in different, in their different licensed areas. And then, and then the work plan itself is, is intended to be, so, so all that is intended to create the ability to provide shared access and work together from an access and, you know, from an access perspective and how the programs work. But then the work plans itself are, the way the license agreements frame them is that they're a cooperative work plan. So, so that when the work plans get submitted, they've, there's already been pre-worked on where they coordinate all those. So like, for example, in this question, you ask about events, like how would that event work? And how, how does that overlap between the two licensed parties? There could be, there could very well be events that, that are entirely on one licensed area or the other, but may require access for one, for one or the other, just to get to the event. But all that is intended to be taken care of with the licenses, the cooperative access agreement, and then the coordinated work plans.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't see any other hands up from the council at this point. I kind of had a question along same lines as Ben when I looked at the appointment of a property manager. In the event that one of the parties were to default, would the other party be the primary property manager responsible?
Yeah, so if one of the parties defaults, then the way it works is that the other party would have sort of first right to discuss with the city, the other licensed area. The city would still have to consent to it, but they basically have the first right to that other licensed area in that case.
I don't see any further questions from the council. I don't know if we wanted to have any comment from Ishwara or from Dustin.
I'll just chime in Dustin Di Matteo here from Farmster. Just very grateful for all the time and effort put in by city staff and patience by council community. We very much look forward to opening up the gates. And thank you, Damian, for alluding to some of the upcoming events through Amama Tati and Sandy Loom. So that's all and looking forward to getting in, into business for, you know, another five years. The first three have been quite the blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Okay. With that, I will open up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use a raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment. And if you're dialing in, use star nine. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. With that, I would bring it back to the council and would obtain a motion on this if there's no further questions or discussion.
All right, I would move that the city council authorize the city manager by motion to execute license agreements with Farmster and Amama Tati to operate the Veranda Falletti Ranch, subject to the final review and approval by the city attorney, including funding community programs up to the authorized budget amount.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I had a comment, actually, could I? I just wanted to say thank you so much to our licensees. And I, I mentioned this to Dustin in our education committee meeting. But I wanted to reiterate, I'm really hoping that when we see that work plan in February, that we can see some opportunities for partnership with the Katati Rona Park Unified School District for some official field trips and things like that with the public schools, just to make sure that there are some opportunities for low-income kids to be able to get involved at the ranch. Thank you. And with that, I will also second, second the motion that we approve.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, Ms. Burgess, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Damian, for that. Thank you, Dustin. Thank you, Ishwara. I look forward to that program being up and running. And that, that will be just a gem and an asset for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to our next agenda item.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, could I request a brief three-minute break?
Absolutely. It is 7:43. Let's come back at 7:48.
Sure. Thank you.
Looks like we have almost everyone back. So we're reconvening from recess at 7:48 PM. Now we will move on to our regular agenda item and see discussion regarding the pension unfunded accrued liability management policy and update on the status of the UPAL refunding project. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Administrative Services, Ms. Angela Quarter, if she's with.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff in our community. Give me a moment, I'm going to try and find my camera so that I can turn that on. There we go. Thank you for bearing with me, taking control over the presentation, covered up my, my other skills within Zoom. So this evening, we're bringing to you the staff's recommendation for establishing a 115 trust for the pension rate stabilization funds, along with the updated unfunded accrued liability policy and an update on the pension refunding progress and where we are right now and looking forward. So I wanted to step back again to where we were, what this 115 trust is and how it can help the city of Katati. So a, as a quick refresher on what it is and how it can assist us, the 115 trusts were approved for pension prefunding by the IRS. These trusts are permitted to invest in monies and higher yielding instruments than the city can currently put our investments into. However, these funds, including interest earnings, can only be used to pay for those pensions. Pension costs are derived from many criteria, not just the rate of returns from CalPERS. So investing some funding outside of the pension allows for a better diversification of those funds. So just taking a quick step back before jumping into the slide, our pension policy, when we reviewed it, taking all the considerations and comments back from council, a big component is the pension rate stabilization fund that was included within the policy. So we wanted to make sure when we brought back this policy, we were also bringing back the feedback from our evaluations of the pension rate stabilization funds. Within the policy, there is guidance where we can use either or a self-managed trust or a provider managed trust. And so we wanted to provide a quick summary of, of what goes into if we choose to decide the self-managed trust. And this means that we would have to use legal guidance in order to establish a trust for these funds. This cost could be anywhere in excess of $25,000. The best estimate of what these fees are going for in order to get that type of ruling and the, the appropriate setup of these trusts. We still then would also have to have an investment broker or a firm we would go to to make sure that we are investing these funds in appropriate manner, that they are segregated from our other funds, appropriately reported and managed accordingly. So alternatively, we can use a provider managed trust fund where they have template trust packages that they've established. They have them written up for the guidance provided by the IRS and/or other established trusts that they have. And they're waiting for IRS approval on them. And they can, that, that IRS private letter ruling, I did want to let you know, one of our providers that we evaluated, they do have that letter of ruling for the 115 trust. But it is for the one that they were able to take to the IRS and get that ruling on. We would have to individually also go and get that ruling in our name in order to have that protection. But considering the trust that they've established already has that ruling and if it is established in the same manner and is managed in the same manner, then it would follow that this should be protected under the IRS, same IRS ruling. And then, of course, the provider managed, we still have the ongoing fees that come in with that provider because not only are they providing the investments and then by, and the management of the investments, they are also providing the administration of the trust and the reporting that goes with that. So with that, we really, as staff, feel like a managed plan was the best option. And so we did evaluate both the CalPERS SEP program as well as the PARs program. And comparing them side by side with the CalPERS, there is a set of, this is the California Employees Pension Prefunding Trust. That's what the SEP stands for. And the Public Agency Retirement Services is what PARs is. So in comparing the two agencies, the significant differences of note are really the history in the pension prefunding program. CalPERS has just over one year of, in this 115 trust for pensions compared to PARs, which has over 10 years of experience. CalPERS focused on their trust for the other post-employment benefits offerings before they offered the 115 trust for pensions because they already have pension, they're, they are the pension plan. And so they felt it was, it was not an area they wanted to move into at first. But then as demand was pushed by different cities and agencies for them to also not just provide the other post-employment benefit trust, but to awful, also offer a balanced and better 115 trust for pensions. This is something that they've moved into in the last, like I said, year. CalPERS only offers two different types of investment strategies, which are rather conservative compared to PARs, which offers five different strategies, which can be either actively managed or passively managed. And then they could also provide to us or create our own type of investment strategy if we want to make a very specific Katati strategy. And then they could also provide to us or create our own type of investment strategy if we want to make a very specific Cattati strategy. They could develop that type of strategy for us as well. PARs offers a portfolio manager who provides investment assistance, so this is direct investments expertise that you can draw on. And they provide you guidance on those strategies within the strategies as well as other investments around the pension program. Versus CalPERS, which offers more of a planned management view and general assistance with your plan. They can also help coordinate with our actuaries at CalPERS to make sure we are establishing appropriate plans and coordinating the one fifteen trust management with our actual pension unfunded liability management, setting up a plan for both of those together. So I know there was a lot of detail within the packet. And so what we felt was a good way to present this as fair and unbiased as possible was to provide to you a summary of the ten years of fees and estimated interest earnings for each one of these plans, based on what they say their expected rate of return is and what their targets are, as well as then offset by their SEP fees. With CalPERS, there is a SEP twenty five basis points, which includes all of the administrative and investment fees. This is flat, this is what's applied to the total investments plus interest earnings. Versus PARs, which has a layered fees, which approximate anywhere from sixty eight basis points to a hundred and ten basis points, where sixty basis points is directed strictly to those administration fees for trust and investment management. And the remainder is for investment fees for the specific funds. So we calculated and presented here in the calculation of the fees compared to those estimated returns based on the target returns stated by each one of these providers. With both of these assumptions, we used a two million dollar initial investment and starting January one of next year. And this is their average rate of return, we did not take into consideration any peaks and valleys, investments aren't necessarily flat, they change over time. But in order to build an estimate that was equitable between the different programs, we wanted to assume an average return, what it would look like comparatively. So this is really where the fees sit base comparatively over the different plans provided by CalPERS and PARs. But in comparing the rates of return, staff had a lot of additional analysis that we performed to really compare the plans and make sure that we're correctly reflecting what potential earnings losses there could be. We focused on the balance of risk and returns compared to those fees. And we found out that really the CalPERS SEP one plan and those plan assets, even though they've only been in this activity for over a year, it really matches their SERP or their OPEB plan that they've had now for ten years. So in taking that into consideration, the interest earnings that they are getting on their returns are more in line with where we see the PARs moderate. So we took this to, to, as a looking glass, okay? If we wanted to really compare apples to apples and what the CalPERS program returns would have been over the last ten years, they have an existing portfolio that is similar to what they're offering in the SEP one plan, and this is their actual returns that they've had over the last ten years. In here in this slide, I do want to apologize, this says five years. And so we were initially comparing five years, but on Packet Day, we got the updated schedule from CalPERS that had the ten years. So we did update the rest of the schedules where it had their average return for ten years. And so that did reflect their reduction to the eight point two percent instead of the eight point nine percent for that CalPERS SERP two plan. So in summary of this analysis here, using the same assumptions that we invest the two million dollars first thing next year and that the investments earn the average return in the next ten years as they did in the last ten years. And we apply the same fees to those interest earnings. The SEP return is revised to that eight point two percent from the plan's goal of five percent. And again, this is based on that assumption that the CalPERS over the last ten years with a similar plan, this is what they are earning so that we can compare it to what the PARs program is currently earning. That's where we can really see that in order to meet those same returns, those fees that are being assessed by PARs quickly start eating into those investment returns because of the high cost. So even though it's earning two percent, point two percent more in interest earnings over the life of those ten years on average, it is quickly taking away some of those funds, so we would have to be in a much more aggressive program in the PARs program, which is called the Balanced, than the current CalPERS program. So it, the most left-hand side, the SEP one, is more corollary in their asset balance as the second column in the PARs program, which is their moderate program. So there was a significant amount of data that is included in the packet, and so I do want to point out just that there is detailed analysis of each one of these pieces that was provided in Packet Pages one twenty to one twenty-two. The CalPERS SEP program presentation that was provided to staff and gone through in details in Pages one twenty-three to one forty-two. That SERP program Strategy Two portfolio as a comparative basis for that SEP is at Packet Pages one forty-three and one forty-four. And then the following quickly up by the PARs presentation that was provided to staff at one forty-five to one eighty-three and as well as their Heart Highmark portfolio, who manages their investments and would be our investment manager if we so choose them, is at Pages one eighty-four to one ninety-three. So based on all the analysis performed and the outreach and interviews and consultations we had with other cities that use these programs, we're recommending that we establish the one fifteen trust using the CalPERS SEP Strategy One. And additionally, additionally tonight, we're recommending that council adopt the pension unfunded accrued liability management policy, thus dictating the usage and management of this pension rate stabilization trust fund. And this policy includes all the comments provided by council as well as a few clarifying descriptions because we wanted to make sure it was detailed enough explanatory to serve its purpose in perpetuity for anyone who comes after us to make sure it's managed properly. Finally, this is just one part of our ongoing project around pension management. Currently, we have proposals out for private placement of the bonds. Upon review of our strategy and timing of issuance, it was determined to avoid any additional delays and to really provide council the analysis and the interest rate cost for these bonds. The most appropriate way was to go out for an immediate bid for those bonds for private placement in order to know what the interest rates banks were offering currently. And so I do have to apologies, we will be coming back to council on November ninth. And that's when we will present that differential of what we're seeing out in the public offerings for interest rates for these bonds versus what we are actually receiving back on private placement for our said bonds. And that's with council approval, we will move forward with either strategy, meaning that on the number, November twenty-third meeting or the following December meeting, we would be moving forward with adopting a private placement if it came in at a decent rate at terms that council was amenable to. And then if we decide to move to a public offering, then that would move forward with getting, receiving our credit rating and eventual bond closing no earlier than mid-January. That ends my presentation, I'm sure there's lots of questions, I'd love to provide any answers.
Thank you, Ms. Quarter. I will bring it back to the council for questions. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, and thank you, Angela, for the great presentation. And my only question is one on the policy, I was going through it again just before the meeting, and I just have one question in the, sort of the mechanics of funding the stabilization fund. So there's this process where we calculate sequestered savings when we, when we choose to fund, you know, let's say we pay down our, we, we borrow money to pay down our, our obligations. Then we calculate basically how much money that's gonna save us and we, we say we'll spend, we'll send half of that money into the stabilization fund, right? Until the stabilization or unless the stabilization fund is above, you know, brings our total funding to over a hundred and ten percent. So if we get, if we're in that state, say there's a, a really good return year and all of a sudden our funding bumps above a hundred and ten percent, then I'm trying to figure out what happens to that money then, currently it says, and thereafter, all sequestered savings will be directed to a pension obligation bond call fund, which I. So two questions, first is can you explain what that pension obligation bond call fund is? And second, as I read it, it's half of the savings go into the stabilization fund until that's, doesn't need any more money. And then all of the sequestered savings from then on have to go into the bond call fund. So it feels like half the savings is available for general fund purposes up until we've super funded and then we remove the flexibility to spend half of that money on other. Is that what's intended, that, that all of the sequestered savings then go into the bond call fund? As opposed to half?
So I, I just jump in right now, so the sequestered savings is, per my understanding, this probably may, might be some clarification, we can make sure that's. So sequestered savings by definition is the half, that is what's being sequestered. That, that's not what it's saying, so I need to make sure that's what it's, it's saying, so sequestered savings are half of the savings. Because other, and then, so if we do get to an overfunded state of over ten percent or at the hundred and ten percent, then instead of going to the pension rate stabilization fund, it would go to the bond call fund for pay down on the bonds. So that is a clarifying item that.
I, I think it's easy to fix the last line of page five of the policy, just needs the word annual inserted before sequestered savings. Because total sequestered savings is all of it, annual sequestered savings is where the fifty percent is inserted in the definition. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, and I would like to thank Angela, she spent some time with me today as I had some issues with some of the numbers and thank you for, for that, I really appreciate that. I do have a question on the policy, and I'm so glad we have a policy here because others, you know, years from now will wonder, wonder what we're doing or what we were thinking, so it's always good to leave that as history. But on the review of policy, it says, city staff will review policy for implementation of best practices and will provide the council for adoption on an as-needed basis. That sort of leaves it open-ended, and it feels like the review should be at some periodic. You know, I, I don't know what the number, you know, a best practice, you know, every two years, every three years, every, some number of years, I think. Because what happens with some policies is they get out of date, and if we put as needed, I worry that they won't get reviewed often enough.
All right, Councilmember Harvey, I'll just, I'll just start with saying, I think the general intent, and Angela can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the general intent was that each, assuming that we're implementing the policy because we're gonna go forward with some refinancing of the pension debt, we would be, we would be using this policy each year as part of the budget process. And the general, I think the general intent, at least as I understood it, was that as we use it each year, provided it still functions as intended, it would probably not need revision, but if we run into unanticipated issues or questions or something becomes not clear in the future, then that would be sort of the trigger to bring it forward for a discussion with council. From the staff perspective at least, obviously the council could always bring it back any point as well if they, if they request it. But I, I think that was generally how it was intended to function. Notwithstanding your comment that, I, I understand that you're saying that every, you think it would be better to have it on some sort of periodic reoccurring basis that's written in the policy, right?
Because it sounds like what you're saying is we would only really review it and update it if it caused us an issue as going through the annual process, if there was an issue, then we'd have to revise it. But it seems like it should be good practice to periodically, like we do other policies, to, you know, periodically review them. And, and the review may, may be that, you know, it's fine, but it, it just, as needed, that could be, you know, someone could say, oh, well, like, like we've seen on some things, oh, this hasn't been updated in ten years. Well, it, it probably should have been reviewed and.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, I would say too that we have a whole suite of various investment policies for, not investment, financial policies.
Right.
And I would probably put this in that general category of policies, if we were gonna look at financial policies, we probably should look at them at the same time.
Perfect.
The whole package.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be okay with that, I just, it, it, what struck me was the as-needed, typically what that means is never, unless, like you said, there's a problem. And that's what struck me.
If I, I can jump in just quickly, we also didn't want it to be something that was haphazardly changed. There's, there's been a lot of due diligence putting in what we believe is best for what the funding strategy is currently, not that that can't change, but that, as Ben brought up, you know, how sequestered savings is defined as half, you know, or other council directions. So it is pretty thorough and methodical, and so a- as Demian said, bringing that back as we put it into practice every year, we will find things, as we do with all policies, and we'll bring those back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Swirr.
Thank you, I appreciate the report, thank you so much, I think it was really clever to look at the return rates for the existing CalPERS plan and, and kind of peg that to the comparable PARs one, so thank you for that. I had just had a quick question about the, something we talked about last time this came up, which was the ninety percent funding level. And that we had a concern that if we funded at ninety percent initially, that would put us really close to or even into a super funded status right away. And I'm wondering, with the way it's worded now, that at no point will it drop below eighty percent, is the thinking that with this initial refunding, we could do it at a lower than ninety percent, just kind of target us not, not going right up to a hundred percent? And sort of what, what level are we thinking about refunding initially? And how does that line up with this policy? So I just wanted some clarification on that.
Okay, Angela, you wanna take it or?
I was waiting for you to jump in, I didn't want to step on your toes.
Oh, yeah, no, likewise, anyway, I'll just say real briefly, yeah, so the last time we did discuss this policy, we did, we did have that conversation and making sure the policy was flexible enough to anticipate future returns, not just what was in front of us at that moment, even though we knew, you know, like for, in the example we're actually in right now, where we have a really high return year, but we haven't gotten that actuary analysis yet. So, you know, we don't want a policy that's gonna cause us to overshoot when we know we don't need to. So that is, that is the funding level that we've been talking about, is not funding at ninety percent, knowing that we have a big, a relatively, you know, substantial increase. a relatively, you know, substantial increase in our funded level from the returns when the actuarial report hits next year. So um, so councilmember Sparks, to your, to your point, that, that is what we're looking at. We're looking at hitting, and I don't know the exact percent, but it's eighty something percent, I think, in terms of what we'd be refunding. And then as soon as we get the actual report next year, we'd be right up to ninety percent or a little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in this policy with the eighty percent sort of floor allows that, so we'd be all good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then the only question I had, based on all the information in here, PERS is not a government agency, is it? I couldn't find anything on there. And, and then I thought, well, that explains the fees associated with that and why those fees are significantly higher than the, uh, the, uh, helpers.
You, you're part, right. Yeah, the part program. Yeah, it's a, it's a private, it's basically a privately managed trust fund. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Angela. Okay, if we don't have any further questions right now, I will open this up for public comment.
Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. It's probably just too many numbers for people and they're like, what? Um, I don't have any further questions. I like the, the concept and the way that you've explained it very much, Angela and Damian. And I think it's something that's going to help the community in the long term. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, thanks. To address that question about the mechanics of funding, once the pension rate stabilization fund is above the hundred and ten percent level, I'd suggest that at the bottom of page five right now, it says thereafter, all sequestered savings will be directed into a pension obligation bond call fund. But that changed to thereafter, annual sequestered savings will be directed into a pension obligation bond call fund. I think that's what was intended, given the definition just below. Does, does that meet your understanding, Angela?
I agree. Yes, that's, it should say annual. I agree.
Okay. And then the other um, uh, pedantic thing I want to bring up is in section four A, funding level objective on page three. Currently reads, um, in defining the funded ratio, it says, and it's the parenthetical uh, comment, being the ratio by which the market value of assets exceeds the present value of projected benefits. If my price exceeds your price by fifty percent, that means mine is higher than yours. And that's not what we mean here. I think that should just say being the ratio of the market value of assets to the present value of projected benefits. But that makes sense. So, so an eighty percent funded ratio means our, our funding with Calpers is eighty percent of our future obligations, not a hundred and eighty percent.
Thank you. So with that, I would um, entertain a motion with the amendments as supplied by councilmember Ford.
Would be happy to move that the city council adopt the resolutions, one, approving the adoption of the California Employers Pension Prefunding Trust Fund, C E P P T, administered by California Public Employees Retirement System, AKA Calpers, and two, adopting the Pension Unfunded Accrued Liability Management Plan, wow, with the amendments um, that were suggested by councilmember Ford.
Second, that much. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Uh, councilmember Sparks, I think I heard you just a hair quicker than councilmember Ford.
Councilmember Ford got the amendment, so there you go.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Miss Burgess, if you will give us a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Nice, nice job on that. And I'm looking forward to that. And I think it is smart to um, allow them to manage the funds because uh, we have enough on our plate. Thank you so much. Now we will move on to uh, agenda item ten D, review of existing city manager and community development department commitments and priorities. Mr. Robid, will you be addressing this?
Yes, uh, yeah, mayor. So I'll start it off and um, uh, I'll hand it off to Noah, uh, at the end, in case there's anything I, I missed in um, my overview. So uh, I mean, everyone, I think, is well aware of how we do our um, priority settings. So we do strategic planning and then um, that eventually gets incorporated into a budget, which is adopted by the council um, by the community committee chair. And um, it's inevitable every year, you know, uh, things come up that are unanticipated or perhaps the um, both in terms of new projects, but also in terms of uh, even anticipated projects sometimes can um, end up being less work than was anticipated or potentially even more work than what was anticipated. And we do have um, uh, I think we have both of those examples in this, in this list. So um, most of the projects that um, were, that came up um, either related to existing work plan projects or totally different projects through the year so far are primarily community development related. So in other words, when they came from council, they either got assigned to community development as a lead or they, um, in some cases, they got assigned to the city manager's office as the lead for that project, um, just really based on uh, the type of, the type of request it was. So um, community development, I'll just start there and I'll just, um, I won't go into too much depth from what's already in the staff report, but we do have um, the community development department, that's, that's the planning department as well as the building department. It's um, three and a half people is what runs that, the, the full staffing for that department. And um, uh, we also do have a contract code enforcement officer and a contract building official. So those are sort of supplemental plus contractors that we hire for some, um, some other sort of ancillary work from time to time. Um, for building permits, it's actually interesting, even in spite of COVID, uh, twenty twenty was still a pretty significant year. We had three hundred and thirty-eight building permits issued with a sixteen, over sixteen million dollar construction value. And in twenty twenty-one, um, so far, we're already at two hundred and ninety-one permits um, through September with a twenty-three, over twenty-three million dollar construction value. Um, so there's a lot of, a lot of building permit activity going on. Business licenses, community development is involved in business licenses. So every time a new business opens up in Catati, they do a zoning review just to basically make sure that that business type can operate in that zone. Um, code enforcement, so um, there is a part-time code enforcement officer that's funded directly from um, the community development budget. Currently, we have seventy-five, well, since January, I should say, January twenty twenty, the city initiated seventy-five code enforcement investigations. Fifty-nine were resolved and thirty-four remain open. And the reason why the math doesn't work is because it was eighteen um, carryover cases from before January twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty. And um, code enforcement, uh, each, you know, each can be um, kind of a case on its own. Sometimes they're simple, sometimes it's a, a lot of effort. And um, even though we do have a contract code enforcement officer, community development is heavily involved in just overseeing that work and, and um, making sure everything stays on track there. Customer service is um, another major focus for community development. Um, we, and, and this isn't community development, this is really citywide. We've um, in the last, you know, many years, we've been very focused on providing the best um, and most prompt thorough customer service we can. Catati, I mean, some of you maybe know this, some of you may, maybe don't, but um, historically, Catati had kind of a bad reputation, especially in the development community in terms of um, responsiveness and consistency of answers and things like that. So, so um, it takes a long time to undo that reputation. So we've been, it's been a focus for many years now to uh, really be very dedicated to that. But it, um, it does take a significant amount of time. It could be as simple as just answering residents' phone calls for simple questions, you more complicated, you know, code zoning development type questions. Um, community development does take the lead on planning applications. So anytime any project comes in that um, that requires planning approvals, then um, they're the lead, at least to start to get it through entitlements. And then this is a, you know, this is one of those areas where um, you never really know any year, any given year, kind of what you're going to be dealing with. Sometimes you don't have a lot of big projects. Other times, big projects just come in through the door. And so you, it's hard to totally staff and anticipate those kind of things. But we try to handle it both with our own staffing and for peaks. We try to use contractors and, you know, to the extent we can to help with those processes. We can promptly turn those around and also turn them around within the requirements under state law. So uh, currently, and so in twenty twenty, just to give you a sense, in twenty twenty, the planning division reviewed and processed twenty-two current development applications and um, in seventeen have been reviewed or initiated so far in twenty twenty-one. And then um, land use and environmental policy changes. So that's um, that's mostly what we're talking about. I mean, aside from the occasional development project that comes through. Mostly, these are the kind of requests that um, come from the community or come from council. So um, these are like, hey, you know, the general plan has implementing action and we, you know, um, this is a priority to us. We want to get this done sooner rather than later. Or maybe the housing element has, within the general plan, has um, action like that. Or maybe it's just something unrelated, um, or not directly related to the general plan or, you know, the housing element part of it. But um, other things like um, greenhouse gas reductions and um, gas station bans, things like that, that we've also talked about. Um, and then they also, of course, um, do other policy initiatives such as um, updating our SEQA thresholds for um, vehicle miles traveled and the bike and ped master plan, um, general plan element updates, like the housing element and so forth. And um, on packet page two twenty-four, there's a list of um, a list of projects. And these are not development projects. These are um, sort of like zoning planning projects. And um, the first table is a list of the um, projects that we had talked about during the budget creation, strategic planning. And so that includes things such as like the housing element update, the housing finance model, the opportunity site selection for the housing element, um, the administration functions, multifamily um, streamlining, canvas ordinance review and update the G H D uh, reduction strategy. Um, that's an example of a placeholder where we knew we'd be doing some greenhouse gas reduction work, but we didn't know the exact scope. That scope is significantly bigger than we anticipated back then, but this, you know, that's kind of normal for what can happen through the year. Um, and as well as economic development two point O, sort of a blanket um, project for a bunch of miscellaneous things that um, that we'd identified. And then the bike and ped master plan update. And um, in that table, it talks about, you know, where they are, kind of where, if they started or not started, um, what the relative priority is, at least from a, you know, at least from a staff perspective. Um, and then the internal target completion date. So these are um, generally, except for the housing element, which is a multi-year and the, and the bike and ped master plan, which is a multi-year um, project. Um, the rest of them are um, intended to be finished in this fiscal year. Um, some added projects, which is the, the next table down on packet page two twenty-four, um, are things like the objective design standards, um, the train depot lot, uh, property sale, that just sort of popped up. I mean, we knew it could come up, but it's one of those things where the timing is hard to, hard to estimate. Um, rezoning Fleddy Ranch and sort of by extension, this agricultural zoning amendment, which um, was brought up earlier in this meeting. And then the G H D reduction strategy, even though it was in the work plan, it kind of um, expanded into what we now know it to be, which is um, reach codes, you know, in addition to uh, PV and storage, EV connections, um, hundred percent clean power, and then also um, new gas station or gas station expansion prohibitions. So um, that's where that project sits right now. And then um, the work, we also are, this came up, um, and it wasn't anticipated at the time, but a workforce housing financing J P A. So we've been working with Bourbon Cowzine and some other cities, um, a couple of other cities in the county to try to get that in place. Uh, or at least get a, um, get a good model in place that we can then bring to the council and have a conversation about. But um, essentially, it's just a more streamlined way to finance housing than the current sort of Jenga tower of financing that we do today, that, um, not we, but everyone in California, probably everywhere in the country do, does today. And it's just really not a way to get things done if that's your goal, you know? Um, and then uh, wayfinding panels and then the uh, Vernif. It broke out of the objective design standards and it's going to planning commission on November first. So it's, it broke off and became its own project and it's moving forward now. And then just um, the other, um, the other thing I'll just touch on real quick is, um, there was some other, even though it's not listed in the table here, but some other things that were um, requested, such as the uh, noise ordinance, green procurement, which is going to get wrapped into the S B thirteen eighty-three work. Um, and the also uh, um, something has come up around the park ordinances and the dog leash laws, um, that we're also looking at. So um, those are basically um, in the city manager's department as leads. Um, but those are some other projects that are out there that we're working on. Um, finishing the uh, Verona Fleddy Ranch um, license agreements, that was um, a significant thing as well as the safe thing, which also completed today, is a significant thing um, in the, out of the manager's office that we're, I think we're able to now focus on from these other ordinances and get these things going, um, at least in the manager's department. And then um, finally, I will just say, back on, in this own packet page two twenty-eight is um, the full list of all the projects that um, that we talked about, both things that were originally part of um, the budgeting and strategic planning process and some new things that have come up. And um, they have target completion dates on there. And um, uh, there is just a suggestion there, if the council is inclined or would like to uh, move up in time, the uh, or move up the timing of the Fleddy Ranch and Agricultural Zoning Amendment work and the new gas station prohibition. It shows basically those two moving up and then the housing opportunity site selection, we can, we can shift that more to the consultant to work on, um, to free up some staff time. And then the um, housing administration function, we do have a pretty good idea of how we manage the um, the for sale housing, but the rental is still kind of up in the air, how we manage um, the rental stock to make sure that it transacts and doesn't get lost and stays affordable. And we have quite a few, I think Noah's been working on quite a few different options and threads there, but the timing of that is uncertain. So so the suggestion is that we would just, we would continue to work on it, but it, it would, it, we would focus more on the, on the zoning and the gas station prohibition. And one thing I will add about the gas station prohibition is um, we were anticipating our C P A to be um, taking sort of a countywide lead on it, but it seems like how it's, how it's developing is that they're going to be just sort of a coordinating role where they're going to host meetings for everyone to talk about what they're doing. But um, but uh, it looks like each jurisdiction is going to kind of go on, go on its own, on their own to uh, get the gas station um, prohibitions uh, in place. And I also um, suggest there that if we're going to work on that, uh, we should also, in parallel, but not, you know, not re- one's not related, not, was not necessarily related to the other, but in parallel, I would also ju- suggest that we also um, if we move that ordinance forward, that we also move forward um, a letter or some outreach to the county, um, to also encourage them to adopt something similar because you definitely don't want to prohibit gas station expansions or ban them within Catati. And then the county, uh, still allows them and then you have a ring of gas stations around your city, you know, so um, they're, they're related in that sense, but they're not necessarily, they don't need to slow down our work for our local ordinance. So um, anyways, two suggestions there, um, based on So anyways, two suggestions there based on some comments I've heard previously from the council, just for conversation. And that's it for me, but Noah, I'll just pass it to you in case I forgot anything that you want to mention that's important to bring up.
Thank you, Damian. No, I think you did a great job summarizing. You know, I would just say to the council, you know, it's important for me, so you all kind of understand kind of some of the day to days things that folks may not be aware of, that just that we do in the department and what resources we have to be able to accomplish those. And then just be able to see how, you know, although we set our priorities at the beginning of the year, you know, things bubble up, whether it's community related or like the objective design standards, I think are a great example of, you know, some state changes in the law that then we needed to respond to. So we weren't caught flat footed by an SB 35 project that came in and we had nothing in place to be able to respond to it. And so that's how some of those things kind of rise to the higher up in the priorities. That being said, I do think we were able to take a sharp look at it, work with Damian and see where we could try to respond and shuffle some of our priorities to what we think the council's interested in having us tackle to respond to some of the needs of the community. And if the council chooses to kind of make the changes there that are highlighted on packet page 228, you know, we'll get going on them right away and I think we'll be able to get them accomplished or definitely at least be pretty far along in the process in keeping with that schedule. So just that's it. And I'm happy to answer any questions as you all review the information. But that's what the intent was to provide this.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you, Noah. I'll bring it back to the council for any questions, comments. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I just want to say I really, really appreciate all the thought that's gone into this. And I, so important to me that you feel like you're set up for success and we're not asking you to shuffle things around so much that you you're not able to follow through on on your projects that you're working on. So I'm just thank you for for this really detailed report. And I did have a couple of questions. One was the, well, mainly I just have one question, which is the opportunity site selection for the housing element. I'm wondering what your feeling is about shuffling more of that off to the to the contractor. Do we feel comfortable with that? Like I assume we do or it wouldn't be recommended, but I just, I guess I just want to hear a little bit more about that. Is there anything that's lost by us reducing our participation in that part of the process and what's the trade off?
So no, I actually, yeah, I actually think it's a better, it's a better way to go. There was just so much change going on to into the law regarding what and how we we make those choices that I was frankly getting really nervous about it. And so I prioritized it early in the process to get some time spent on it, especially while we had, you know, Joel Galbraith, senior planner, who presented the design guidelines and did those for us. He agreed to work with us for a year. He's a retired guy and just came in and basically did us a favor and agreed to work for us part time for a year. And so early in his time, I asked him to spend some time on that so we could get a jump on it. And then we had some development projects come in and as I kind of was able to familiarize myself with the changes in the law and talk to the housing consultants and they identified it as part of the scope that they were going to do. And frankly, it's more within their wheelhouse and their expertise. It's a good trade off. And so the timing is just working out well that I was nervous about it, so I prioritized it early. And then we've been able to kind of make some adjustments as it, the the realities behind it have come to light.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel a lot more comfortable about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, um, yeah, thank you for this detailed report. And it's always helpful to know, you know, especially when there's a bright red line, you know, what's above the line, what's below the line. And if we want things, you know, kind of moved around. My question has to do, it's a little bit hard on some of these things that are not started or added, exactly how much resource they'll take and or whether or not we could add other resources to it to achieve that. So I'm think, you know, I don't know what I'm, you know, kind of asking for, you know, am I asking for a million dollars and, you know, 10 people? Or am I asking, you know, for a little bit of resource that maybe we could go out and and add and supplement to our staff? So that's kind of what I'm looking for, because I don't know, you know, if we can help monetarily to move some of these along or not.
Yeah, I think it would be almost a project by project situation where, you know, one of my concerns right now is I have a lot of developers telling me they're going to be filing large applications in a very short timeframe. And so I'm trying to kind of marshal some of the resources we have on staff to be able to respond to that, because there's state mandated timelines that we have to respond to those folks with. But that's been going on for about six months and not a lot of things have materialized. And the other kind of tool we have is the ability to use contract planners to respond directly to those development applications and have those developers pay for those services out of pocket of their costs. And then we can use internal city resources to work on other priorities. All that being said, we are holding a neighborhood meeting for subdivision on the south end of town tomorrow. And I do anticipate that to get going and we've assigned senior planner Harry's to that to because he's been working on it with that developer for a while now. So I guess if there's other priorities that are below the line that the council would like to tell us to explore ways to try to get going, then I'm happy to do that. It'll be probably be a combination of trying to find internal resources and then trying to maybe see what external resources we have that we could bring on and then their cost. One of the other constraints that we're dealing with is just when the economy is really busy, all the planning firms are and consultants are really stacked up. And so I have a couple meetings scheduled for early November to see kind of what resources we could get going. And then just so the council's aware, we also are recruiting for that halftime position that the council basically made Joel Galbraith's position permanent for the department, which I'm really thankful for. But I just don't know what type of, if we're going to be able to fill in or, you know, the level, because we've, we listed that as anything from entry level to a senior planner, because we weren't sure, again, all the uncertainty in the labor market right now, we were just trying to cast the broad net as possible. So I have a lot of iron is in the fire to try to respond to it. I guess priority shifts. And so if the council wants us to go ahead and keep looking, I'm happy to do it. But right now, the red line, I think, is what I'm comfortable biting off without.
So I guess it it comes back to if we were willing to give additional resources, I guess, to get these, as Damian pointed out, move up a couple of these items. What is it that it would take for us to do that?
Well, and and that's why I gave you a long winded answer, because I just don't even know what's available right now.
You don't know.
I'm trying to find out. Generally, planning consultants are about $100 an hour, between 100 and 125. And then we did put FTE equivalents to some of these items in the original budget document, so we could give some some hard number estimates with a little bit more head scratching if we were told to look specifically on a few of them.
So let me ask this another way. So some of the stuff that's above the line that's not started are any of those things that we could push to get these things? Can we, can we trade? I'm asking.
So Councilmember Harvey, so I, so if you're referring to like packet page 224 and the one that's not. Yeah, so like, well, the multifamily stream, so let's just, we can run through this real quick. The multi, the housing finance financing model is kind of related to this. I, you know, right now, we're, I, you know, I would say that we're not recommending moving immediately on that just because some of this could come out of the housing element work. And also some of it could come out of that GPA workforce housing conversation with Burbank Housing. I think.
Well, some of it also could come out of, you know, things that the state is working on, because housing and in particular, housing financing, I think there's a lot of chatter around, around that.
Yeah, well, I mean, definitely when you're talking about the housing financing generally, but in in particular, when we're talking about mixed income or, you know, workforce kind of housing, that in particular is really challenging to try to finance. And historically, it's, you know, you go around with your hat in hands to, you know, like line of different governmental agencies and it's a very long, painful process and uncertain too. So, you know, that's, that's just not, you know, if you're intent, if, you know, if the state is serious about, about, you know, funding the kind of housing that they say, you know, they want or the kind of housing that we want, whether that's, you know, straight housing or it's mixed use development. You know, we need, we definitely need to, you know, have some better models for financing that kind of thing. So.
Agreed.
Yeah, so, you know, just I guess why I'm, you know, why I'm just saying that I wouldn't recommend starting that immediately is just because there are some things that we're working on that will, I think, tie into that same, that same conversation, both the the housing element work that we'll be doing as well as the work that's already underway. But we don't have an end date on it yet, but it's the, I said, the workforce housing. So that's, that's one, for example. The multifamily streamlining ordinance that hadn't started as of sort of the writing of this report, but it's imminent. And that's grant funded. So I think.
And I would also, it's an action item from the from the current housing element. So it's something that we haven't even got to yet that we committed to six years ago. So we did feel as important, especially given the grant time.
That's fair.
Yeah, so it is, it will start soon, but it just hasn't yet. The cannabis ordinance review and tax resolution. I think, you know, if you put on your sort of economic sustainability, economic viability hat, that one's an important one to not neglect, because they have, you know, that that industry is a significant and, you know, a significant source of revenue and it'll become more over time. And it's been part of the council's long term strategy for, you know, fiscal sustainability. So that one is still gonna.
Part of our mix of, you know, diversifying our revenue.
Yeah, exactly. Diversifying revenue and also is one of the, one of the very few opportunities to create new revenue in a relatively short period of time as opposed to, you know, property tax and sales tax, generally speaking, that's a almost a generational project, you know? As opposed to, as you know, the council has identified the cannabis business tax as well as hotel transit occupancy taxes, as those two taxes that are currently or at the time were not in our revenue mix that could quickly, relatively quickly in the scale of things turn on and help in terms of fiscal sustainability to really to kind of pay for the whole show, you know, to pay for all the services that the community wants. So that is an important one and we do still tend to want to get to that, but these other priorities have pushed it into the second half of the fiscal year. And then economic development 2.0, that one just, you know, I don't know, I don't know about that. That's, you know, that, that's, I think, generally is generally important. It's, I don't know, I would, if I'd say it's time critical, but it's just stuff that we, I think we want to get to. And this is primarily revolving around the, I mean, it's a pretty broad net, but some distinct projects that, you know, that that we've talked about in the past is the West Side Industrial Section and sort of dealing with some zoning consistency across the two sections there as well as along Redwood Drive and the freeway facing businesses allowing some retail components there. And and continuing to just allow additional flexibility. I mean, we're all, you know, we're all sort of figuring out what our new retail environment is. And some of our zoning isn't really well suited for what the future is looking like. So it's really updating that stuff and it is important. That might be one, you know, and, you know, that might be one thing where, you know, maybe there's a way, you know, with funding consultants or something that there might be a way to, you know, expedite.
Get it started, but with consultants.
Potentially.
And I would agree with that. The one thing I've been telling Damian is just, there's just so much uncertainty. You know, the the retail and those types of businesses were already floundering and trying to find their new normal. And then the COVID situation, it's, you know, what I don't want to do is spend resources moving in a direction that then doesn't provide benefits to the community, because, because there's so much unknown of what's going to be coming out of the COVID, you know, the new reality coming out of that.
So is that one maybe we should wait a little bit on? Since we're not out of COVID? To your point?
I, I don't think it's super time critical, but I just, I think it's something that we can't lose sight of. You know, maybe as we get into next calendar year, we can start, you know, giving some more thought if if things start normalizing again.
But and I would add, you know, we had that in the last two budget cycles, because in 2019, when we did the zoning work, we said, okay, we're going to have another step to this to make some of the changes that Damian pointed out. But then COVID hit and we very quickly had to, had to retool that effort to try to assist the existing businesses and see what we could do. So even though what we think it is now, we we have time with, we don't know what it could be. And so having, you know, and it just gets to some of the broader points that I think are highlighted in the staff report about, you know, we have our list, but we need to be flexible with it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, make sure I was thinking about this right, because it feels like we're looking at the the page 224 of the packet and sort of talking about how to move things around on that. But am I understanding right that page 228 is sort of your recommendation of how to move things around? Like, maybe that would be a good starting point for the conversation is that later page?
Yeah, well, 228 is the page of the of the budgeted items or the the things that we talked about in strategic planning and budget. And then move forward on plus all the other things that were sort of added in the, you know, in the planning realm. And so and the highlighted projects are based on, you know, as both Noah and I said, just based on what we've heard from the council so far, just our recommendations on which ones we would suggest moving up in time priority and which ones could slide down a little bit to try to accomplish at least what we believe the council's goals are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or clarifications from the council? I'm not seeing any heads, so at this point I'll open it up for a public comment.
Thank you, ma'am. We're looking to our attendees tonight. Please use a raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the city manager for such a detailed report and for thinking so much about the gas station prohibition issue, which I'm glad to see moving up. And although I wouldn't want the county to slow Cotati down, I, it sounds like a very good idea for Cotati to also be working with the county at the same time to push them forward. So I, I hope that goes forward as a priority. And thank you very much for considering it so seriously and strongly. I had a question about the agricultural zoning. And I'm not sure, well, at least I'm not sure what this is about in detail, but just in general, I hope that this means that the city might be moving towards allowing more small scale farming in areas where it hasn't been before, because small farmers doing sort of organic farming and veggie box schemes and things like that closer to the city would be wonderful. And I hope that more of that will be allowed, given, of course, all the considerations about, well, the details, the case by case details, but. Um, well, the details, the case by case details, but. Um, that sounds like a really good idea rather than waiting for the next general plan review. Um, that's it. Thank you very much for opportunity to comment.
Thank you. And that agricultural zoning amendment does incorporate. You were referring to, Ms. Blaker.
Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello. I'm very educational to hear all the varieties of activities that are going on and. Yeah, how to simplify it really is what I'm sort of hearing. I I kind of agree with the discussion on the economic development that maybe that's a longer term sort of view. Um, things are changing. I I I think we're gonna get more of this in the future of just how do we cope with. With basic changes for streamlining things for for more of a. Uh, simplification and focus on. Reduction in energy usage. And and there's just a lot of historical momentum on that. So. I I, of course, am promoting that. The bicycle and pedestrian master plan update is very, very valuable. I I think an impacts has a five year horizon when you start thinking of of the fact that it's. Something that impacts the state when it comes to Caltrans along Highway one one six. So anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to comment and I'll end my comment there.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Moore, that will end the public comment.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to the council. Damian and I had talked about this a while back and there was just so many things coming up and so many things coming out of the city all at once. It's like, okay. How are we gonna prioritize this? We've got a limited number of staff that wear multiple hats. A lot of times we do have to contract out because we don't have the resources there. If, in fact. We have an opportunity. And we have allocated a. Point five F T E for development, maybe we look at doing a one point O F T E. Um, if if you're able to find a decent candidate, you know, maybe something. You could bring back to the council, hey, I got this wonderful person that's willing, but they don't want to work for time and they could fill all these avenues. I would certainly look at something like that. Um, and even if we're on a limited term basis, some people are fine with working for a couple of years and then they're ready to go elsewhere. Um, with that in mind, I am comfortable with the suggestions on packet page two twenty eight. Um, I thought we could wait on the gas station. Um, but I'm willing to concede that. Uh, I don't see anybody looking to build a gas station right now. And on the agricultural zoning, I understand that with some of the concerns on there. Seasonal concerns would come into play. So I think that makes sense to look at that in the first quarter of twenty twenty two. But I'm open for discussion and questions. Uh, Councilmember Ford?
Um, no, I was just gonna say I I appreciate the work that staff put into rethinking this and trying to incorporate, figure out how to. Uh, incorporate into the work plan that the priorities we've been expressing in council meetings. So. As you said, Mayor Moore, I'm I'm in support of the reordered list of priorities and timeline on page two twenty eight.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Thank you for all the work and putting this together. And I agree. The priority list on two twenty eight is helpful, and I also like your suggestion. That if we can find a candidate, you know, rather than half time to have them work full time if they're a great candidate. I would be open to listening to that proposal to kind of get some relief here and get some of this stuff moving because. You know, we we want to make. This department be successful and with all this stuff going on, I think that we we need to resource appropriately.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
I just wanted to express my support also for this, for for the listing that you've come up with here and. I would say that the the agricultural zoning amendment is, I know, very urgent for some folks in our community. And so that earlier that could be. Done, I think, the better. And the new gas station, I I don't know. What the likelihood is that we would have a gas station come in and in the. Time between now and when we can get this done. So it doesn't seem quite as urgent to me as the other issues. As the other issue right above it. But I'm, yeah, I'm supportive of this listing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So based on that, it looks like you have the direction going forward, Mr. Obed and Mr. House. Thank you so much for preparing that. Sometimes we we fail to see all the things that we throw at you guys, but I think this is a good way to look at that and prioritize it going forward. Thank you. And now. How we go on to item ten E. Uh, discussion on county redistricting. Before we get into that, do we need to have any breaks? Are we okay? Looks like we're okay. Okay.
All right, mayor, some members of the council and I'll. I'll just be brief. So this. This was just a, um, an item of. timely opportunity because the. The county supervisor, is that supervisory seat? Zones, their districts are being redrawn right now. And this happens, so all political boundaries essentially, all these. You know, state level, federal level, and even county supervisor level get redrawn every time there's a census every ten years. And so that data. Was actually quite late. It didn't become used, there wasn't a usable version of the census data, even though this ARC. Subcommittee was formed by the supervisors to manage this districting, redistricting process. The actual usable data didn't become available until like September twentieth, around September twentieth. Um, and I think the first maps were available shortly after that in October. In October eighteenth, actually, and then. And because of the statutory deadlines to adopt the new boundaries. Which is December fifteenth, everything is. Um, super speed at both the ARC and the Board of Supervisors. So even though the ARC just got their really first set of maps that were available to the public on October eighteenth. By the time we have this conversation. Um, it's already moving from the ARC to the Board of Supervisors to start their public hearings. So. Um, there's a really small crack of time where we, if we have any particular interest on the supervisor. Supervisory district boundaries, now's the time. And. Uh, just as a point of reference. I think we all know that we're in District Two entirely. This is David Rabbit's district currently and. Uh, it might be relevant for you to know that Rona Park is split between two districts between Chris Corsi and Rabbit, districts two and three. And they're actually having a similar conversation tonight about the districts because their particular interest. Um, what they feel is a community of interest is that their entire city is just in one district rather than split between two. And so I would anticipate if the. Um, I would I would not be surprised if the council, if the Rona Park Council. Ends up sending a letter. Suggesting that that they're included in one district. It's not, it's not quite that simple. I mean, they look at a lot of different demographic information, both. Population and demographic details, ethnicities, things like that to draw their district boundaries. Um, so I don't know if it's, if Rona Park will, if they do, if they do make that request, if they'll have any traction, but. I thought it would, I thought it would be at least a good conversation to have before the opportunity passes us by. If, you know, and I think the conversation primarily is. If Rona Park is is successful and consolidated into a single supervisory district, would it make sense? For Katari to also be in that same district or would we want to continue to be in District Two, for example? I think there's, I think there's pros and cons to both. I think generally speaking, you know, culturally, we're probably more aligned with Petaluma. But. Rona Park is similar to us in in a lot of the topics that. A lot of the things we're dealing with right now, such as, you know, we just had this conversation about the safe team. Social services, homelessness, all these things we work through the county on, and so does Rona Park. Petaluma is an entitlement jurisdiction, and so we don't. We don't usually engage with them on those issues because they're sort of doing their own thing and they don't have a common interest in that respect. So. Anyway, I'll just, I guess I'll just leave it there and. And the item is if there is any particular council interest to just provide direction and. We'll carry it out. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. I did think the demographics are pretty interesting and and this packet here. I will open it up for any council questions or clarifications. Not seeing any. So with that, I will open it up for public comment.
Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. And I don't know that there's any concern or request to change anything on our existing district boundaries at this point. Um, so pardon me, I spoke too soon. Councilmember Ford?
Well, I'd say I I think it's a good exercise for us to think about sort of. In what alignment we might sort of have more input into county processes because I don't feel currently like Katari. Is, you know, has much of a voice at the Board of Supervisors and. It it does seem that in many things, you know, Rona Park is a more likely partner. Than Petaluma. That being said, I'm not sure that. That the 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 need is strong enough to spend any political capital by composing a letter to the board and and. Perhaps alienating our current Board of Supervisors representative or anything like that. So. And I I think it's a good exercise for us to think about, but I'm I'm not sure there's an action for us to take.
You're not inferring that it could be potentially political, are you? Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I I'm just really curious to hear from the other council members on this and what you think about this because I, as a new person, I'm really not. Too knowledgeable about what the implications would be. It it always struck me as odd as a Katari resident that that we and Rona Park were. Um, represented in two different districts. And if you walk. A hundred feet from my house, you're in a different supervisor district, which is just always seemed a little strange to me. Um, but I I'm just curious to hear what what some of the potential downsides would be to. To switching. Or requesting to switch, other than the politic, I guess, maybe. Including possible political downsides or or just, I'm not sure what I'm asking. I just want to hear what you who are more knowledgeable and may think about all this.
The only thing I could add to that was that the, my understanding was that primarily the districts were composed of a number of constituents in each particular district. Versus a political culture. Going back. Santa Rosa and Petaluma have always been, or previously were at opposite ends of the political spectrum. So maybe that's how some of that district got drawn previously, some of those districts. But I think now with, personally, I think we have a greater collaboration with the surrounding areas and the communities, especially through the. Mayors and councilmembers and as Mr. Obed brought up with our safe program as a prime example, working with Petaluma and Rona Park and Katari. So I don't know that it is such a hindrance. In the way the districts are drawn now. So I don't necessarily have any inclination to try to. Send anything that way, but if there was a compelling enough argument, I I would certainly be willing to listen to that. And apparently there is no compelling enough argument. So with that. I guess we'll just, we'll leave it at that unless you want to add to that, Mr. Obed.
Yeah, I don't know if I would. An argument or not, but I think. At least from from Rona Park's perspective, their interest, aside from not being split between two supervisory districts is to. Is to, you know, have their entire population, because it is primarily split along population. Equivalent population lines. So. You know, they're, they seem to be primarily interested in. Um, ensuring that they can use their population to demand more attention essentially from the Board of Supervisors. And, you know, I mean, maybe, you know. Maybe if Katari's population were combined with Rona Park, that might make, you know, more sort of weight to the central county. Um, supervisory district, but whether or not that is. At the end of the day, whether that's something that is preventing us from collaborating effectively regionally, I. I don't really have an opinion on that because I think, you know, we still, we still do collaborate effectively in most cases.
Yeah, much more so than than in the past, I think. Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, and I guess I I just would add that at least from my, from my perspective, I don't know if it helps or not, Laura, but. We have had a tendency, oops, lost my, can you hear me? Okay, I lost my, I guess we've been going on too long. Um, we've had a tendency to be able to work with all of the supervisors. So even though David's our supervisor. Depending upon what the issue is, we may reach out to a different supervisor. To get different things that we need. So I agree with with John that, you know, kind of regionally. Um, we've been able to work through it. As you will know, on a lot of our J P As and things, there's. A county representative. So we built relationships with all of them, if you will, and don't necessarily. Rely on one specific one for what we need. A lot of times it's, you know, dependent upon what it is a subject matter is. Um, who we go to. I don't know if that helps or not, but that's just my perspective.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay. So I think we're gonna sit pat, as they say in poker. If that's a general consensus on that.
Yeah, you know, one one more thing I'll add to, I mean.
Too late, we're already sitting.
As we're just throwing out like hypothetical scenarios, I mean, there's also a potential benefit for. You know, let's say Rona Park becomes District Three and we're District Two. If we have mutual interest, then potentially we have two supervisors that we both can talk to to push issues independently as well. So. Anyway, it was just a, it's just one of these, it's one of these issues that I just didn't want to see pass by without at least having a conversation about it.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yeah, and Damian, thank you. And Damian, I, as you mentioned, you know, potentially adding our population to Rona Parks to. I think just psychologically, the number wouldn't seem that much bigger to someone. To where maybe the benefit of staying in a different district and having the ear of another supervisor might be more than the benefit of adding our numbers. So. That's sort of causing me to lean towards sitting pat, as you said.
Because as John pointed out, it's not as if we added. Them together, we would be able to form a, what did you call it, middle district? You know, a central district because there's still not enough. Um, you know, it wouldn't put us up there to make a separate district in and of itself.
And I also think if you look at some of the other districts and then our district. There are more things that are probably in common versus District Five, which is. A large swath of area where you may have so many different competing concerns, you know, in different actions.
Yeah, I I think I think that's right. I mean, if if Rona Park was in a single district, they would still have to pull, even if we were in the same district, they still have to pull in South Santa Rosa. even if we were in the same district, they'd still have to pull in South Santa Rosa to get to that roughly hundred thousand, you know, population threshold.
Okay. Well, I think you've got direction needed on that. Thank you for bringing that up. It's it's always an interesting conversation. Um, and you never know how what that's gonna look like down the road as as demographics may change. Okay. That brings us back to you, Mr. Obed, and the City Manager's report.
All right, so um reminder that the COVID testing site is still up and running Tuesdays and Wednesdays, seven AM and seven PM at the St. Joseph's Park and Ride. Um, appointments are highly recommended there. Um, we kind of danced around it, but um, and I'm sure the council members will talk about this today. They're a little bit more in their reports, but we did have ribbon cutting today for the uh mobile mental health crisis response team for our cities. Um, this is modeled after the Cooch Program. It's accessed by calling nine one one, and the services provided by SAFE include this is um mental health clinicians, um EMTs, and so no, nobody carries a gun in the SAFE team. Um, so it's basically civilian response for people who are under the influence of drugs or alcohol in need of treatment of mental illness or need shelter by providing counseling and transportation to the appropriate location. Um, also addressing minor medical complaints and trying to um, basically, it's a, um, I think a good way to think of it is it's the ultimate, you know, upstream service to try to catch people um before, you know, a medical condition, you know, um gets so bad that it ends up in the emergency room. That's the most expensive way to treat something. Um, and as well as using the EMS system. And and on the other side, trying to um, you know, try to intervene with people in mental health crisis before um there's either, you know, they get an, get arrested, or you know, then it goes into the, you know, goes into the court, you know, law system. Or worst case scenario, there's a bad interaction with law enforcement and that person was injured, so. Um, anyway, that ribbon cutting was today, and then um just a little uh update on the storm. So the storm was great. Our um all of our our water and sewer systems performed well. There was no sewer overflows, anything like that. Um, the storm drain system performed well, too. There was some minor flooding, but um nothing significant. Um, just to be expected with the volume of rainfall. The uh, our primary drinking water reservoir is um Lake Sonoma, and um the the levels did go up. We were at around a hundred and one thousand acre feet, and went up, it's currently up about a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet. And it's still rising, although that is that uh level of increase is tapering off. So it's good. Um, it's not, we're not out of the drought yet. We need probably several more storms like this to get us out of the drought. But it's a good start, so hopefully we can keep it up. Um, we talked about the groundwater sustainability plan tonight, so I won't um talk about that, but also um the next thing is the West Side Project, so that three point seven million um dollar project that the council awarded is underway. And um I expect that the work on the East Side will resume shortly, provided we have continued um good weather. So that is um Condor Court, Robin, John Roberts, and um getting that um, getting those roads reconstructed. And so that's gonna be, you know, this project, as you know, is is reconstruction, so they're gonna mill up the entire roadway um and recycle it in place, recompact it, and then um uh and then bring in just a new asphalt lift for the top. So um that will hopefully be going again shortly. And um wayfinding signage, again, that's the uh downtown directional signage as well as the kiosks at the trailheads, um Laguna de Santa Rosa Trailheads, and so that is um still on track for November, December um installations. Um, Katati has, uh, we conducted a gray water installation last Saturday and um and this in for a property in Katati, and then we have some lawn transformations that we're offering for two residents, and so people can um sign up for that. Applications are due by the twenty ninth of October, and um they can find information at uh dailyax.org. Um, the housing element, like we've, like you all know, is going, and there's a sign up for people that are interested in tracking that, and that's on our website. The bike and bed headmaster plan is also underway, and there's a sign up for people that want to track that, which is also on our website. Um, on recreation, we have Camp um Camp Katati Thanksgiving Break. Registration open, and that's gonna be Monday through Wednesday camp during the Thanksgiving week for children that are um out of school but their parents are not. And the camps are eight AM to five PM each day, and they're held at the community center here. Um, space is limited, so sign up early if you're interested in that. On Friday, um, kind of going a little bit out of order chronologically here, but Friday, December third, we're hosting it in person, holiday tree lighting in La Plaza Park from four to eight, eight, four PM to eight PM. And we're gonna have horse and carriage rides, food, and craft vendors, free cookies, um hot cocoa crafts, and um for children, of course, a visit from Santa, so. Um, we're working on that right now, and then also um more immediately on Halloween, October thirty first, we have Katati Candyland. And Ashley Wilson will be very proud of me for saying that properly. I'm always trying to say City Halloween, and I somehow fumbled that, but it's Katati Candyland, which is the event in La Plaza Park and also the um a lot of businesses downtown that um host the event and hand out candy for um young ones. So there's a daytime event, eleven AM to three PM. We do plan on um also uh it is, in addition to our, you know, city staff being down there, um handing out can candy, we also will have um police staff down there and also SAFE team staff down there um to, you know, for the families to um talk with and interact with. And um this year, we're also gonna be um hosting a a costume show every thirty minutes onstage at La Plaza Park and just for um the little kids to show off their costumes, and then um carnival games in La Plaza Park also. That's hosted by uh Ranch of Katati High School, their ASB uh club and management events class. And there's a lot of more, a lot more information about all this stuff um online under uh City Hall, City News, um you'll find the City Manager update there um that has a link, has a, has the summary that I just gave you with links to all the different resources and and information. And um, and also um as these things come up, they're also on social media, so there'll be uh, there'll be a lot more information for people that want to participate in any of these things. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Um, the Candyland event, rain or shine?
Rain or shine.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no questions for Mr. Obed, we will move on to City Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, my first report was that we um put out the draft Sigma Plan, which you guys got a presentation on, and we had a meeting on ten fourteen to have more public comments. So there was public comment on ten thirteen with the community meeting and on ten fourteen. Um, so good stuff there. Um, on ten twenty one, I went to the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, and um the MOU, which I asked to be brought back, it is one item. The other item, it's kind of complicated and it and and will, it'll eventually come before us, but um as you'll all recall, the county had the agreement with Republic. And when they did that agreement with Republic, the fee for the Waste Management Agency was in the county's agreement, which we are not a part of. The JPA wasn't a part of it. The cities weren't a part of it. So what that did to the agency was that they capped the fee at what was in there, and therefore it didn't allow us to change our fee, which is really unworkable for the things we need to do from a household hazardous waste perspective, as well as all the changes coming down for SB thirteen eighty-three. So we just couldn't move forward with that. So the county negotiated with Republic to sort of make some changes um there, and they are going to then allow us to up our fee. But what they are reducing um has to do with uh SB thirteen eighty-three, which will go back into our franchise agreements, and that's why it gets a little bit complicated. So when that comes back in there, I'm sure Damian, you can shake your head, but I I think that will come back to council as those changes um happen because of thirteen eighty-three, and thus the financial part there. So the good news is we were able to change the cap, and stuff is moving um around, and you know, it never belonged in there like that, so um this will really um help us out for the next, you know, twenty-five years, which is great, so. And then um lastly, today I attended the um Cal Cities League Leaders, and that was really interesting. They kind of went through all of the stuff that happened in twenty twenty and the beginning of twenty twenty-one, and they broke us out into little rooms, if you will, um to talk about what our goals might be for Cal Cities for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, so. Um, I I don't know what everyone said, but m- more will come on that, but that was really, really very interesting. So that's all I have. And the SAFE thing was great. Thanks. I I'm so happy, and I can't wait to get our first report on that when when they start doing their thing.
Thank you. Well, I'm not seeing any other hands up. Uh, I do want to thank the council members that were able to participate in the mayor's and councilman's meeting um last week. Um, and yeah, it looks like there's, hopefully we'll get some sort of a good program coming up through the um continuum of care for the homelessness issue, and that that board will hopefully adopt those recommendations that came out. So I I do appreciate the support on that. And uh, and then, of course, the the ribbon cutting, I thought was fantastic. It's such a great program, and looking forward to that. And that's all I have on uh Councilmember Reports. And if we don't have any further at the moment, um we will go to public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Burgess, if you'd be so kind?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you'd like to make a public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end a public comment.
Thank you so much. And then we don't have any further information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for a uh good productive meeting and uh prioritization. I think that's gonna be great. And I will adjourn our meeting at nine twenty-eight PM. Everybody have a great evening and a great weekend.
Thank you. Good night.
Night, all. Night, everybody.
Happy Halloween.
Thank you.
Bye.